As Chair of the Hampton Falls School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to the executive order two zero two zero dash zero four. This public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. Which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are a. Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Hampton Falls School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously. During this meeting through this platform and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting. Through dialing the following phone number. Six four six eight seven six nine nine two three and the webinar ID is eight three seven three one seven seven eight four zero six. Or by clicking on the following website that websites listed on our agenda. HTTPS colon backslash backslash US zero two W E B dot Z O O M dot U S. Backslash J backslash. Eight three seven three one seven seven eight four zero six. Be providing public notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necess- necessary information for accessing the meeting. Including how to access the meeting using Zoom telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website at the SCU twenty one offices at WWW dot S A U twenty one dot org. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. Anybody has a problem, please call six zero three nine two six eight nine nine two extension one zero three or email at. D T U I T E at S A U twenty one dot org. The adjourning the meeting of the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting be shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please sure to state whether there is anyone in the room. With you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Deb, can we take the roll call at this time, please?
Yeah. Greg Parrish?
Yes, present and family in and out.
John Bailey is not here at this time. Jason Ferriest?
Present and family in and out.
Jill Swayze?
Here, family around.
Anthony Lang?
Present, family in and out.
Welcome Anthony.
Oh, that was quick, Ann.
Yeah, I see John, it's just. Hey, John's here, yeah.
Excellent.
So, John, we were just doing roll call, so. You can announce.
I am here with family in and out.
Thank you.
Later, buddy.
Hey, John.
Hi.
Okay, that's all set, Deb?
Yep.
Matt, I guess turn it over to you at this point?
Thank you. So I really appreciate all your time and effort in reviewing the budget on our last budget review meeting. We did make. Three adjustments to the budget. On page thirty four, we increased the speaker's account to a total of seventy five hundred dollars. On page seventy seven, we increased our postage account to a total of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and on page eighty one. We increased our other expenses account to a total of two thousand dollars. So that that brought the budget up by a total of just about forty five hundred dollars. For a total of six million eight hundred and sixty seven thousand two hundred and fifty one dollars or a reduction of eighty eight thousand twenty seven dollars or negative one point two seven percent. Additionally, there were a few outstanding questions that were posed at the last review meeting. I'd emailed the answers to you, but I just want to. Review those items just to make certain that everyone saw. The first of which had to do with grounds repair. So the question was posed about the athletic field turf care. And I did confirm that that is for both the baseball and the softball fields. Every number of years, we do need to refresh the like the infield mix and that do that work. Additionally, there was a question about our under our software account, the Microsoft Office three sixty five software license. That's for eleven staff members and those are all staff members who are on Windows based laptops. Subsequently, we received a few questions, you know, via email. The first of which was in regard to educational assistance assistance as far as how compensation is calculated. And I did answer that those are hourly employees, however, they do fall under the CBA. The CESA CBA, C- Education Support Personnel Association and that is. That compensation is determined via separate warrant article that does go to ballot. We just passed a CESA CBA, a four year CBA, so that is set for the next couple of years. And and that will you will see those cost of living adjustments and step increases. Because they do follow a salary schedule similar to teachers on an annual basis and those are. Once it's approved at ballot via warrant article, they do, it does get embedded into the operating budget. So you'll see that for the four years of the contract. Additionally, there was a question about preschool. So currently Hampton Falls does not offer preschool. However, every all schools are required to provide services to preschool students who are. Who are identified require services via IP. So that sometimes entails, you know, sometimes we're able to provide those services at Lincoln Ackerman. Or sometime or if we don't, we can't offer those services, we will tuition those students out to a preschool that that can offer those services. So you sometimes you'll see those type of expenses in the the our district placement tuition account. A third question had to revolve around extracurricular stipends. We do offer a stipend for athletic director. This is a position that is in the CBA along with all of our other stipends. And this role is responsible for scheduling games, coordinating with other schools. And for all of our athletic events. And that's just like all of our other our stipends, that is a year to year basis. You know, we, you know, based on. You know, and based on our applicant pool, whoever applies for the position. Oftentimes, it's the same person over a number of years, but it does technically open up every year. And the final question we received had to do with our Chromebooks lease. So that is a lease program that we entered into for our one to one device initiative. The lease really affords us the opportunity to. Level out funding from a year to year basis that way we're not, we don't see variations. With, you know, having to to replace, you know, fifty laptops for, you know, three grade spans. Or something like that. So it really it helps it also it's from a cost perspective. You know, they these Chromebooks have a life lifespan of, you know, three to four years anyway, so it. So it just makes sense from that perspective. They are covered via maintenance warranty coverage. And actually, we've made good use of that coverage. We've had, you know, probably, I think it's about twenty claims on Chromebooks and it really covers just about everything. Even intentional damage, which unfortunately sometimes that does occur, but primarily accidental. So that. Brings me to a few other items that were discussed that I just want to touch upon. You know, there was some discussion about retirements that we know are occurring at the end of the school year. And the board has not formally approved those retirements, so we can't go into detail about it. However, I do just want to. To let you know that we have done the calculation as far as the cost component of that because you can. You know, oftentimes you'll will budget accordingly based on the retirements, however. You know, when when looking at who's retiring at what pay rate they are and then budgeting for a new employee. Oftentimes, the experience level is is higher for the person that's leaving. So the person that's replacing them is a lower lower salary. However, the 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 person that's retiring is owed a retirement stipend. So in this case for this year, it's it's essentially a wash when it comes to the lower salary, but the stipend payout. So I would recommend not making any adjustments to the. To those accounts based on on the retirements. We also, we're also. Will likely pay out a stipend at the end of this current year, just to hedge a little bit there. So we do feel that we'll have funds available at year end, so that will alleviate any potential risk. Any questions in regard to the retirements?
Yeah, it's great. Go ahead, Jay. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Matt. Um, I would like to talk more about this when we actually know more about what's retiring and the numbers and that sort of thing. And and I'll take some of my questions offline with you, but. I trust that you, you know, the money saved and then you you'll factor in. Necessary funds to replace. You know, I guess at the end of the day, I want to make sure that we have the obviously staff to cover the the student. Population and make sure that that's also the consideration as we as we move forward on, you know. I know it's tough to hear that we're we have a number of retirees, but at the same time, you know, we have to. Move forward and accept that and make sure that we're accommodating the student population, you know. You know, so, you know, not knowing now those numbers of who and what and number. It's just hard to, I guess, have an in-depth conversation about that in my mind.
Well, I mean, I can tell you the number, I mean, the so the the variance is. Thirty five thousand dollars. However, if we. Assuming we pay out one retirement. One and a half retirement stipends end of this school year, that that covers that cost. And then there's obviously a there's also there's an uncertainty as far as what the new employee will elect for health insurance. So so we're we're, you know, obviously, we're working on assumptions. We always we always budget for an EM, so that's that's kind of middle of the road. Replacement and then we we budget for. A family plan for for. Okay. So that that those are our budget assumptions. We have, we have the current budget this year to to absorb paying out one of those buyouts, one and a half of those buyouts this end of this year. So I'm very comfortable with this, however. You know, we could certainly talk and we could certainly add money to the budget, but it's I don't think it's a it's necessary.
Thank you.
So Matt, that's and I know we're not going into this, that thirty five represents all five.
Correct.
And do you think that one and a half could be increased depending on how the year goes? Or is it kind of look mapped out that that one and a half is probably max out of this year's budget?
Well, I said one and a half because that's that's what will cover the the variance. But I actually think that we can probably absorb a little bit more than that. So we'll we'll likely will when we're at the end of the year, we'll likely. Buy out as much as possible this year, so that you'll likely work further to our favor. You know, and that's what we do every year, whenever there's a retirement, we'll we'll try to pay that retirement stipend out of current year budget. Just to help us in the next budget cycle or budget year.
From a legal perspective. Can can we cut those checks out of next year's budget? The union accepts that?
Oh, yeah, we, I mean, we, it's a matter of two weeks. We either pay him out June thirtieth or like July tenth or you know, it's.
Okay.
We just let the employee know, we do it every year, depending on what what our budget allows, it's either this year or next year.
Okay.
All right, um. There's another topic of discussion in regard to the electronic sign. It's. From my takeaway from the last budget cycle was or the last budget review meeting was that that's an item that. We want to pursue, however, we don't feel it's this is the year to include it in the budget. However, we will revisit it, may perhaps utilizing end of year funds or building man's expendable trust. Either at the end of this year or into next year, depending on how our our budget looks. Is that is that? Okay with the board?
I agree with that approach.
I do as well. Were you gonna have a work set? Were we gonna have a work session on this or is this gonna be wrapped up in the. Regular school board meeting?
So I had when Beth and Bill and I met yesterday to set the agenda, I did bring this up. Bill was going to get with Matt to discuss this, but as long as we're discussing it tonight. If it's on next Tuesday's agenda, I can just take it off. I think I agree with what Matt is saying. This has been on our to do list for a few years now. The optics of doing it this year is probably not good. What I'd like to propose to the board is. Put this on our agenda for our March meeting. Take a look and see what we where we stand financially with the budget. And strategize at that point, you know, what what do we want? Do we want a sign that hangs on the building where the existing plaque sign is? Do we want to try to find a location for a two sided sign? And I think at that point, Jay. We can have some pretty detailed discussions, we'll know where we are financially. We'll know the optics a little better than we do today. And, you know, I think we can then move forward and possibly see if we can work it into. Next summer as a project, if all the cards play out. That would be my recommendation to the board.
I'm fine with that.
Matt, does does that? If we were to take that approach, would that give us enough time to bid out, strategize and do all of that for a potential project next year? Or next?
Yes, I think from a timeline perspective, that that makes sense if we revisit this in March. And then, you know, we can turn around an RFP and, you know, thirty days, it's not. This isn't a major construction. Project, so it so I mean, worst case scenario, we have to put a concrete pad in if it's not so. If it's out on the, you know, on the road.
Right.
On the side of the road, you have to put in a base so that there's some construction there, but otherwise. These signs are, there's a pretty quick turnaround, they're they're pre-made, so it's it's not. So it's born our end in the prep, so a base, we have to either run a cable out, electricity, wireless or or hard line. So that that's the extent of it, but the actual sign, it's from our experience, it's been pretty quick.
Jay, is that does that you you good with that?
Yes, great. That that's mine. I just, I do, I do want to speak to it. I think it's a great idea, just like you said. I want to speak to it intelligently, so I'd like to talk, you have to speed with you and John, good.
Okay.
All right, so we'll we'll make sure that that gets on the March school board agenda. To revisit, we can also, you know, Jason, you know, we, I believe you're the facilities representative. So we can also discuss further during those, you know, those meetings. We meet quarterly, so we'll have at least one meeting before that that school board meeting. The other item that we discussed was the concept of a library redesign. So I just wanted to to touch base on that that item, I that that's not something that. We would include in this budget, but I do want to state the intention of us forming a committee. To develop a comprehensive plan on how to address that. And I just want to make sure that the board is 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 on board with that that concept and that that plan.
Is is that something, maybe you can talk me through the differences between sort of our governance formulations of groups? Like a committee versus a work group, you know, some are going to have different types of roles because a committee might be more formal than we need for this.
So I'm, I think it's it's that's, so that's really fanatics. I when I say committee, we don't have a formal library committee. It really is just a.
I've been in situations where one term is very formal and has like, you know, governing responsibilities to it.
Joe.
Absolutely, and that's something in this case, it would it'd be more of an informal working.
Okay, good.
Joe, we can form a committee and it becomes a subcommittee of the school board. And then that subcommittee does fall under the same guidelines that we have to follow, which is what you're referring to. I think in this case to Matt's point, what I'd like again recommend to the board here, I think this is a great idea. But I think we probably have a board representative sit with a committee that Beth forms probably within the building and Beth chime in at any point. And then we take a formal look at this and kind of take a look at. What an ultimate goal would be? Are we talking cosmetics? Are we talking both cosmetics as well as material within the library itself? And then we can go from there. I would again recommend maybe we look at the beginning, starting something like this maybe in the spring.
I would just add that I want to come back to John's original point that this is about books. And, you know, it's great that we want to do a facelift in that room because it, yes, it does need it. We want to make it an attractive place for kids, but I just wanted to bring his original point back to the center.
I agree with everything, thank you.
So that that's.
Are you good with that kind of a timeframe?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I just I was saying about sort of the way in which we went with the playground, you know, it was. A group of interested committed people with a goal and I'd much rather see. The staff sort of run with their ideas and have one of us there to help rather than us have to continually regroup and meet on it. If that makes sense, so I like, I guess I like your approach.
Yeah, I think it really makes sense. The staff will be using this. Their input is very valuable to us at this point and to John's point about the books and building that that part of the library up, so I agree with that.
Is there a is there a board member that would like to volunteer for when Beth does form that group to participate?
Um, I would be interested recognizing that that might happen post March. You know. It's up in the air.
Sure, we'll decide that in the new year.
Okay.
We have a lot to get through before then.
You're here.
All right, so that that wraps up the outstanding items on my end. So are there any additional questions on the operating budget?
Yes. Do we know why board decks went up a thousand dollars?
Yes, because I, when negotiating that contract. I negotiated a lower. It's a tiered rate, so the first, the first is like an introductory rate, so there there is an increase.
Okay.
We're still, we're still below their list rate. And but it, I believe there's is one more slight increase next year as well.
And rather, is that lease across the entire S A U? Or is that school, did school by school?
That's that's an S A U wide.
Okay.
License.
Where are we on staff devices as far as? How current are they? How up to date are we? Are we behind on anything? Is this something we need to look into? I know we had a tech plan, just kind of curious where we are with it.
Yeah, so we do have a technology plan with replacement cycle and I know we have a planned purchase, we made some purchases this year. And actually, we. With some of our savings from the wireless upgrade, we were able to accelerate some of those device purchases. And then. So that next year, we could bring that that budget amount lower. So I think we're in we're in good shape as far as as far as replacement laptops and computers for staff. Correct me if I'm wrong, Beth, but I.
We're right on.
We're good. Part of those eleven. Microsoft Office licenses is our new devices too. So we don't currently have eleven this year, but we will next year.
And is that which leads me to my next question, is that Microsoft license again across the S A U? Or is that specific right to Lincoln?
That's specific to Lincoln.
Is it a cost benefit to look at doing an S A U? Microsoft license or is it better in this direction?
I'll have to look into it, I'm I'm certain.
That's fine. My last question, Matt, has to do with our technology trust. Anyway, it it just sits there and there's about twelve hundred dollars in it. I don't know what the language of the trust is. Can we use that twelve hundred and shut that trust down? Or if the language is such with that trust, can we maybe start funding it for emergencies or future development type? Projects?
Well, I think our technology plan accounts for. For future technology purchases. Via the operating budget. I I think it's appropriate to to spend it down. So what what we can do is take a look at the the language of that warrant article, determine what we can actually purchase with it. And work with Zach. To to come forward with a proposal for the board to spend that last remaining balance.
Because we haven't funded it since I've been on the board and it just sits there and I think it's just a waste even at twelve hundred dollars to sit there.
We'll we'll develop a plan to utilize that last those last funds and we'll we'll bring it forward to you if if that's okay with the board.
Yeah. Does anyone have any additional budget questions for Matt?
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. You did a great job. It was very helpful.
Thank you.
So do we go ahead and vote on this now, Matt?
Yeah, so at this point, we we'd ask the board to vote on the. Total operating budget of six million eight hundred and sixty seven thousand two hundred and fifty one dollars. And then upon vote, we'll move on to the warrant articles.
Matt, in in the. In the revised pages, I see there's a box to the right that says final action. Will those be filled in once these are finalized and we've voted on it?
No, so that will be once it's.
Voted by the town?
By the town, correct.
Okay, so the town does see the administration proposal and the school board proposal.
Yes.
Okay.
So yeah, so so you'll see that there's a slight difference between the administration proposal. So yeah, so, so you'll see that there's a slight difference between the administration proposal and the board proposal with those three accounts that we adjusted.
Yep.
So.
Okay, just making sure I understood it.
Yeah. And then once it's actually approved at ballot, we'll fill in the final action.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 operating budget in the amount of $6,867,251.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Deb, can we get a roll call vote?
Yes. Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason Barria?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Thank you. Again, thank you to Beth, Matt, everybody who's involved in putting this together. I appreciate the, the time you put in and where the final number came in. I, I'm very happy to present this number to the town. So thank you very much.
Great job.
Yes. Matt?
Yes.
Warrant article?
Yeah. So as we discussed at the last board review meeting, we are, we are proposing not bringing forth any expendable trust warrant articles to fund our special education trust or building maintenance expendable trust or health trust. However, we did identify the HVAC system in the gymnasium as a as, as a more immediate concern that we would like to bring forth. So we did go out, issue an RFP and go out to bid for that, that project and get a locked-in number. So we sent this out to, you know, 10 of our vendors. And unfortunately, we did not get a good response on this RFP. Which was interesting because we, we had two other HVAC projects at, at, when it kinda in Seabrook. And we, we did get a, a good response on both of those projects. The issue, based on our feedback from the vendors, is that this, this is a little bit of a unique project that's, you know, they're not, it's not, it's not as straightforward as a replacement HVAC. You know, they're, we're looking, we're looking at taking out a pretty substantial system out of there and then and then not only providing air circulation for the gym, but it also needs to circulate the air in the, in the kitchen as well. And then, and then run it out. And it can't go on the roof because the roof is, is slanted. So it's gotta, there's gotta be, it's gotta run down to a, you know, ground level outside of the building. So we received one bid in the amounts of $440,492. So th- this was a, this was a disappointing cost points to, to receive. And, and we're, we're not, you know, we're not recommending to go forward with, with that, with that proposal. You know, as you recall, Ekman had, had provided an estimate as part of the overall addition project. And they were, they were quoting us in the $200,000 range. So this is substantially higher. You know, it's double that cost. Now, I will say that there's a lot of work out there. We're, we're seeing that with a lot, with many of our construction projects. So these, these contractors can afford to pick and choose. And sometimes they, they put flyers out there that, you know, that may be a little higher than what, what the actual cost, cost should be. So I would recommend bypassing this and then looking to reissue this at a later date. I don't, I don't think that we have, that we're gonna get a better results if we reissue this now. And we can, we, we can obviously try to reach out to more companies, but I, I'm not optimistic. If we reissue this year, our people see a significant difference. So I would suggest putting this off until next year. But I just want to open that up for discussion for the board and, and your thought process.
The only question I really have is, is there any way that we could find out if there, what the percentage of, we're already there and it can be discounted from Ekman? Like, is the 200 and some thousand dollar really, if Ekman was gonna bid this project at that time standalone, would it really have been a $300,000 project? Like, is the variance a little bit closer? I mean, I know it's not gonna be a lot closer and I'm not suggesting we spend half a million dollars, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's absolutely a component of it, because there's, there's sunk costs with them already being on site. They have the labor there. They were already working on HVAC in the building. It's, I mean, it's, it's not $240,000. I mean, you, you might be able to account like $20,000 maybe. But I, I don't, I mean, I don't think it's, I mean, it's nothing close to this variation, variance.
Oh, Matt, I, you mentioned this, the new system needs to accommodate the with the, the kitchen facility? Is that correct? So what is serving that volume of airspace at the moment?
It's, uh, they've got the kind of standalone system over there that's that needs to be replaced. So it's, it's functioning, but it's not, so it's not, I mean, so, so that's another consideration. We could, we could cut that scope. But it doesn't make a whole lot of sense because it, it, that, that really should just be serviced by one system. Cuz it, I mean, it's side by side. So we, we replace the gymnasium and then, you know, a couple of years down the road, we make another investment to replace the.
Yeah, then we're back, we're, we're talking about Matt. So, listen, well, it's, it's incredibly disappointing to hear that, but you know, if, if there's a way to get the kids in there, I mean, listen, I mean, the poor, brand-new gym and we can't use it, it's, it's, it's just a tough pill to swallow. And if there's any way we can get the kids in there to use it without the HVAC, then that, you know, makes the pain a little, you know, the sting a little more bearable, but we all, it, it has to get done. It just, you know, now we have to rework this and part of me wants to just go and vet out a few more potential, you know, companies. I know 10, I know that 10, 10's a good number that, you know, you've, you've done your due diligence there, perhaps there's more, but, you know, in my mind, the, the biggest thing here is to get the kids back in that gym and use it for what, you know, what it's built for. And, and the, whatever means necessary, how we can make that happen, how we can facilitate that as soon as possible.
Well, the, I mean, this wouldn't be occurring until next summer anyway. Even if we did put it out. So like, kids aren't gonna be in that gym this school year. Period. Whether that we bring this forth or not. Unless COVID magically disappears. And we'll be able to utilize it next, you know, you know, assuming that we're back in a normal environment, we can, we can utilize the gym next school year. So you know, we can, what we can do and what I, what I intend to do is so we, we worked with Siemens to kind of design this. So I, I think our next step will be to go back to Siemens and explore if there's any cost cutting that we could potentially do, like a, any design changes rather, that could potentially cost, cut costs, although I mean, we weren't, it's not like we were looking for a Cadillac system. We were just looking to get some ventilation in there. We're looking for the, the low-cost solution. So I don't think that, that's the magic bullet, but we need to do our due diligence and, and go back to them as, hey, this is what we got back. What can you do to help us? And then we, and then we start, we start talking to, to our vendors and and, and look at, you know, you know, about reissuing this and, and, and get feedback from the contractors. We literally got the bids back today. So there's been no outreach yet. So normally we go back and we, we talk to the contracts and be like, hey, why didn't you bid? Like, is there something like?
Yeah.
What, what's the issue here?
They've got the, this is the go, this is definitely a go-away price too.
Is it just, is it just you have, you know, you have too much business right now? Is it the timeline was too short? Like, you, like, just gonna get this done next summer? If we expanded the, the timeline, is it the design? So we, we have to explore all those issues and that's, that's really our next step.
Okay.
And then, and then we go from there and, and make adjustments accordingly.
Is there anything that we can do in the short term to create a situation that lowers the bid? Like, the roof seems to be the big blocker. It seems like these companies wanna mitigate their risk and they just, there's too many unknowns with a slanted roof. And I am a technology guy and not a construction guy, so this may be completely out, but like, any sort of platforms or any structure that can be done creatively to facilitate and this unit living in the air, not on the ground?
I mean, that's a question that we can revisit with, with Siemens. I, I think, I think both Siemens and then originally with Ekman, they had suggested that we put it on the ground as well. I mean, they looked at all the different options. I, I mean, we, we can talk to, I mean, we, and that's something we'll, we, we can also ask the contractors. So it's not just Siemens. It's, we'll talk to all these contractors and see, and, and see what they suggest. But I think we, we've, we've been kind of working on this project for long enough where we've had multiple companies say this really just needs to go on a, so we put a cement pad and placed it on the ground. So.
That's fair.
Matt, since you just received this information today, were you planning on reaching out to Mark LeJulier to kind of get any feedback from him or kind of get an idea what they were thinking? Or do you already know that information? Have that answer?
I could. I mean, we have a great relationship with Mark. I mean, technically, he's not contracted with us right now. So I'm unsure. So, you know, he, he'll have a conversation with me. But it only goes so far. He's not gonna actually, unless we pay him, he's not.
No, I understand that.
But I can, I can certainly have a conversation with him.
This, the second, and it kind of goes to what Anthony just asked, is removing the existing air handlers, a separate project onto itself that maybe we should consider doing that might take away from the overall bid? Or since they want to move everything to the ground, we have to remove the existing air handlers?
Yeah, I think there was, I think there is potentially the option of leaving the, the unit, you know, in the gym. I know, I know that was an option with the Ekman plan. You know, that would have saved us about 30 grand.
Right.
So I will, we'll explore that as another option. You know, if the differential was closer, that might be something we'd explore now. But you know, 440, then I, I know that's not gonna save us that much. But yeah, I mean, that's something we can, we can look at as our next, when we go to the next round. It's, you know, again, it's one of those situations where, like, do we do it right the first time?
Yeah.
No, I mean, cuz, cuz then we're gonna have another reasonably large project that we're gonna have to do down the road to remove it, the existing.
Well, which, which you opened the door to my next question. I have no problem. I am not in favor of a 400, $500,000 project. Will not pass. It doesn't really matter, what matter whether I'm in favor of it or not.
Yeah.
So that being said, we have no more articles going on the ballot for next March. If that is the case, should we entertain funding our trusts? If we were to fund the trust, especially the maintenance trust, you know, we build that up a little, a little bit more money into it. It can help offset the cost of this HVAC project following year a little bit easier.
I mean, it's not a bad idea, particularly the building maintenance trust to as another step with the intention of doing the HVAC. I mean, it's unreserved fund balance. So it's not, you know, it, it does, there's not, and I mean, it affects tax rates, but it's, it's a year later.
Correct.
So so I, I think, I think it's appropriate to look at expendable trusts since we're eliminating HVAC.
And the reason I bring it up is in the CIP meeting, the board, the CIP board specifically asked us, do we have a trust that we can continue to fund to help offset capital projects? Since we're not bringing a capital project to the table this year, I would have no problem contributing to our trust funds. I don't know what the flavor of the board is, but that's just kind of how I stand on.
I, I think that's a great idea, Greg. Well, I just have a couple more questions. I'd love to keep later in this project, but a few questions, Matt. One is, you mentioned there's a project going on in Seabrook as well as a project when it kind of had those contracts been awarded yet? Or is that still in the process?
Those bids came in, or it's the same timeframe. So I think those bids came in today as well. So no, they have not been awarded yet. No. And actually, Seabrook, even though we had, we, we've decided not to go forward with that warrant article because, just because of the economic climate. So it's just gonna be when it kind of, that actually goes to ballot.
Okay. Is when it kind of a warrant article or is that just a project?
That's a warrant article. They, they have a, so I mean, when it kind of, it's a huge facility. It's almost 400,000 square feet. So they have an annual HVAC warrant article. So it's a 20-year replacement cycle. So every year, there's a new HVAC that's replaced. So that's every, every year, it's about $200,000.
Yeah, if it's a warrant article, I don't know if it'll work out. See if we tie them together somehow and say, listen, we wanna give you this project for when it kind of, but you gotta do Lincoln as well. Doesn't sound, it's really a viable option.
Oh, with the contractor, right. We'd have to completely redo the RFP. For, at least for, I guess we wouldn't have to do it for when it kind of, because we could, we could have kind of a, that's difficult. Then, then we get into some unfair competitive as far as procurement goes. We'd, we would have to re, completely redo it.
You answered my question. I'm ready to move on. So my next question is, in the kitchen, the ad hoc ventilation system that they have in there now, is that adequate? Or does that open up a liability issue for us in terms of either safety, air quality, quality of the food, et cetera?
It's adequate for the time being, but it, it's ending, it's reaching end of life. So we know we need to replace it.
Okay.
So it was just a natural connect, like, time to, to do it with the gymnasium being totally out of service to do it together. So.
Got it. So then, the, the only things that I would add is, I, I agree. I don't think we wanna put forth a $450,000 warrant article. I think that's a waste of time. I would be in favor of, by the end of this year, depending on what the budget looks like and what money we have left over, if any, to move the ball forward, even if that means just taking stuff off of the ceiling now to take that aspect of the bid out of it. I wouldn't be a fan of doing all the work we've done in the gym, fix the HVAC and still leave that monolith up in the ceiling. I think that goes against what we're trying to do here at the school, is my personal opinion. And, and just lastly, just a general comment that I agree with Greg, that if we don't do any warrant articles at all, I would be in favor of funding the trusts, especially where there's no immediate tax impact. It's just for unreserved fund balance. So there's my two cents. So there's my two cents. That's it for me.
So I, so I, um, so we have, we have, we, we'll, we'll definitely go forward with, um, all, all those items that, that have been discussed in regard to HVAC. We'll, we'll look at, um, and we'll talk, we'll touch base with the contractors, our Siemens or the consultants. Um, I'll, I'll give a call to Mark LeHulier, um, and we'll start kind of the process over again, um, which with HVAC and we'll also look at, you know, potentially, um, segmenting it out and, and from a cost perspective as far as removal and then the installation. Um, and, and hopefully we'll, um, we'll have something to come back with, um, this spring. Um, some, something a little more concrete. Um, so I guess is the, the the idea to just fund building maintenance, would you also like to fund, um, special education or health?
I, I would like to do all three. Um, if we funded them similarly to the, to way we did this past year, I believe twenty-five thousand went to special education, fifty thousand went to the building maintenance trust and twenty-five thousand went to health trust, uh, which, uh, brings us to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and again, no, there's no tax impact. It's just unreserved balance.
Yeah.
Um, I would have no problem moving forward with those same numbers.
And those, those are exact, those are the figures that we approved last year, so.
I agree.
Matt, can you remind us the, um, sorry, my son just fell climbing up the stairs. Uh, could you remind us the balance of those?
Yes. In one second.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Not at all. So special education is at two hundred and thirteen thousand five oh one. Healthcare is at fifty-one thousand six sixty-four. Building maintenance is one seventy-nine four oh eight, but keep in mind that we're worth, we're withdrawing about thirty-five thousand dollars um, for the kitchen, um, freezer refrigerator that we just installed. So that brings it down to like one forty-four.
Greg, John, I mean, with this information, I mean, it's, it's feasible to bump up the signage. Pay for it out of the maintenance trust, right?
We could. Yeah, we could.
Well, let's save that for.
And that is, that's one of our options.
I mean.
The end of this year is I, it's either unexpendable funds or building man's expendable trust. So those are two very good options, cause I, I'm, the sign is probably twenty grand.
Yeah. At twenty thousand, we could go ten thousand from the trust. If we had ten thousand in the budget, we could fund it from that.
Something to think about.
No, I agree with you.
So my only question is, and I agree with, uh, putting money into the, the trust. Um, I just wonder if we gain anything by going with no warrant articles and explaining why we're going with more warrant articles and trying to set our stage to get a two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollar HVAC system passed more easily when we get that bid.
You lost me in the gain part, Anthony.
Well, do we, does, does going to the town and saying, we understand that the, the client, you know, what's going on, we, we were gonna come to you with a, you know, bid, but it was four hundred and forty thousand dollars. We know that's not right. So instead of putting any warrant article out and doing this, we're not going to ask for any more approval and set ourselves up for the bigger fight down the road.
I, I, I think it's a fair question. Uh, my approach to it would not even mention the four hundred thousand dollars we're not bringing forth. Just present our budget with no warrant articles for the most part. Um, I think that is a good message to the town, you know, that we realize and understand what the climate is right now. Explain that we're funding our trusts for the reasons we are. Um, we do have a project coming down the pipe that is the HVC, HVAC and our plan is to help offset some of that cost with the trust. And I do think we, that, I think that's where the gain is. Um, and I, again, I think it shows the town, we're listening to them. Um, you know, they've been generous with us and, uh, uh, I, I think bringing forth nothing along with a budget that's less than this year's budget, I think that's a huge game.
Yep, absolutely.
So just, just for your reference, um, the other schools within SC twenty-one, um, we are not bringing forth any expendable trusts in any of the other districts. Um, the only warrant articles we're bringing forth is that when it kind of is that HVAC pro, project that I, um, mentioned earlier. And then at Southampton, um, they have a, uh, a leaky gym roof that, uh, desperately needs replacement. So, um, those, so they've taken the tack of, you know, we're not bringing any warrant articles forward because of the economic climate. Um, that, that's, that's kind of the approach we've taken. So I can, I can see both. I can see the benefits of both. Um, I think it'd be really good to have some funds in that building maintenance trust for when we do this project and for these other small projects like the electronic sign, so.
Well, the other thing we can do is, uh, go forth with our trust like we're talking. But at the deliberative session, if the temperature is to not fund them, we can always take them off the ballot. That's our, that's it. That's when, uh, uh, our last chance to do that. And again, I wouldn't have any problem doing it, but, um, I, I think funding these trusts, especially the building maintenance trust with some of the projects that are on our plate is probably a prudent thing to do, but, um, I can see both sides as well.
In, in that case, Greg, I, I, I do like to, you know, we can let the public, um, see and voice, give them opportunity to voice their, you know, opinion. Um, and, and now with, with, with our newsletter, we can get some information up also, uh, regarding this. The options or what we're trying to do here. Um, I, I would be in favor of that, Greg.
You're also, you're also bringing forth a pretty significant reduction in operating budget.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that speaks volumes to, um, to the fiscal responsibility. You know, for this, this school year or this budget process, so I, I think that, you know, regardless of the warrant article decision, I, I think that says a lot.
And, and again, the warrant, the funding the trusts, there's no tax impact. That's, uh, that's from the unreserved balance, so. Um, again, I, I, I'm in favor of this.
Matt, one last thing, how do we go about resetting the, um, benchmark for each one of the trusts? Cause I think we're slightly over the building maintenance trust.
Well, yeah, so you're actually technically not because we're, we're making that withdrawal.
The fridge, okay.
But we will go over if we make, if we make another, um, contribution to it. So that, that is simply, um, a board decision. So you can vote to, to increase any of them at, at any point in time. Usually we do it, if there's something you're interested in, we do it during the budget process of like this meeting.
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but because the language in the original warrant article did not specify a cap for each trust, the real, we really don't need to have one. It's more of a board preference. Or am I wrong there?
Yeah, no, you're, you're under no obligation to, there's no cap. It, it's purely, it's optics. It's, it's, it's smart for the board to have, uh, you know, for the public to know that there's a, there's a, there's kind of a maximum that you're looking to fund it for, um, and, and for transparency for, you know, what we're looking for in each trust.
John, do you have numbers for the trust you're interested in seeing or increasing or decreasing to?
Um, I would probably recommend increasing the building trust at two hundred and fifty grand, given everything that's on the plate right now. Um, I also think if we have a, a benchmark for each one of the trust funds, we, we need to revisit pretty regularly, maybe not every year, but certainly every five years. Um, just because inflation happens, healthcare costs go up, special education costs go up, et cetera. Um, all those things become relevant in terms of what that benchmark should be. So I've been on the board for six plus years now, I think. And, and we've never really discussed that in my tenure. I don't know about your tenure before me, Greg. But I, I think it's something we ought to be revisiting and, and I'm not sure about what the other fund should be.
So, so last year we changed the special education trust to four hundred thousand from, we upped it from three hundred thousand. Um, if you recall, because, um, the, um, we, we based that on kind of a, we didn't have a super long conversation, but we, it was when we addressed it, I, we made the recommendation. Yeah, I don't think you formally voted, but by approving the budget, you, um, as presented with the new target, um, it wasn't as formal, but we, we did, um, present it for four hundred thousand and it was in the, the PowerPoints and the budget book. Um, but that's one out of district placement, um, because costs have escalated, um, to your point, so.
And I, I, John, I would even, and again, this is based on the CIP uh, presentation conversations. I, I would even consider moving the building trust up to three hundred thousand dollars um, to help us offset projects and project costs. As far as health trust, I think, Matt, we have it somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand. I think that's fine. I don't think it's higher than that.
That's a new account, so, uh, I, I think that's appropriate based on our total, um, health insurance costs. We, let me see. So our total health insurance is, so for next year, it's, it's just under six hundred thousand dollars. So, um, so yeah, I, I, I don't think that's warrants a change, uh, health insurance.
Greg, to your point, I think three hundred thousand is fine. It's a good number.
I froze up, sorry. The, these numbers are, these caps, I mean, um, do you ever approach these? Do you ever hit these numbers? Are they just there for figuratively? I mean, I'm, I'm just, just curious.
Well, they're not really a cap. It's more of a target. So of, of what we want to maintain, so, um, so we're, we're at it for building maintenance, um, and we still, we still have, um,
Okay.
Still have some room for special education and health, so.
So my understanding is that not, if, you know, if you increased it to three hundred and you're, you're below halfway there, does that give you leverage to, you know, for us to increase the amount during warrant article season of, of, you know, what we'd want the town to chip in? Is that, was that what kind of the mathematics behind that?
We have that ability. We've never really done it like that, though. We tried, because it's from the unreserved balance, um, it, it's kind of, no, no pun intended, it's a balancing act here. We want to, we want to return money, but on the other hand, if we can fund a trust to help offset costs for a future cost, um, we want to try to do that.
Right.
John, you said a couple of things and I missed them.
I was gonna try to answer Jay's question. I was basically saying it's our transparency and
Yeah.
Voice of the town saying this is what we think it should be at to cover the kinds of things that come up.
Right.
Ge- generally speaking, there, there's usually good support for these expendable trusts because one, it's unreserved fund balance. But also it's a, it's a contingency, so it allows us, you know, for those unanticipated costs, but also it allows us to, um, to hedge a little bit with our budgets. So for example, if we did go through with this HVAC project, say it was two hundred thousand, we could have potentially just submitted a warrant article for a hundred thousand dollars with the plan to utilize the building expendable trust. Same thing with health insurance. If we have a huge sometime, I mean, health insurance premiums, um, have his, you know, the last whatever two decade have skyrocketed. So we can under budget a little bit utilizing the trust. Um, so those, those are, that's kind of the, the benefits, um, to those trusts, and I think people understand that.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of this, knowing that, I mean, even in the current bid that we just got, I mean, the expectation of what we should get has even changed over a couple of years versus the current climate. So having more money in that to come to the town with, you know, a, a more like inflationless, um, warrant request in the future, uh, is gonna be helpful.
So that being said, um, man, I didn't get, is the hundred and fifty thousand for the health trust where we are? Is that the target right now?
Or the health?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that target is one fifty, correct? And we're at fifty-one.
Right. So the only target we're speaking of moving is just the building maintenance trust um, to either two fifty or three hundred. Um, I don't care which direction we go. I do think, um, it's a good idea to increase it, to increase that target. So I'll, I will leave that up to a board member to go ahead and make a motion to, we do make a motion on this, right, Matt?
I, I would, let's just formalize it that way, um, make it official.
Somebody wants to make a motion to increase the building maintenance trust, please feel free.
I'll make a motion to increase the recommended balance for the building maintenance trust from a hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollars.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Discussion. Deb, can we take a roll call vote, please?
You're on mute then.
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Jason Ferius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Thank you. So Matt, Matt, should we take a vote then on putting the trusts back on as warrant articles for twenty-five, fifty and twenty-five?
Yeah, we're gonna need a vote on those.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to put the special education trust appropriation from unreserved balances of twenty-five thousand dollars on as a warrant article. The building maintenance trust of fifty thousand dollars from the unreserved balance is a, a warrant article. And the health trust for twenty-five thousand dollars from the unreserved balance as an article. Sorry, Deb, I know that's convoluted.
I'll second that.
Who's that? Who did the second?
Jay.
So Greg and then Jason. All right, Greg Parrish?
Yes, yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
Jason Ferius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
And Anthony Lang?
Yes.
And then at the deliberative session, if we get pushed back on this, we can just take it off the ballot. So I don't, I don't think this is a bad move.
So that, um, that is it for the budget. However, I did want to raise one last topic, which actually is a deliberative session. So, um, we, we have, uh, essentially two options for, um, where the deliberative session will be held. Um, the first of which is the, um, school cafeteria. Alternatively, um, you could potentially hold it at, um, when it kind of auditorium. Now, I think technically this is the moderator's, um, decision point, but I just wanted to bring it up that this, you know, this is something that we, um, is gonna Is gonna, we're probably gonna have to have a discussion about considering, um, depending on what the, um. Covid situation is come February. There does not appear to be, we, we did consult with legal counsel, there does not appear to be. Um, a good remote option for the deliberative session. Uh, because people need to actually register with the clerk, like to, if there's any sort of vote. And then it's a matter of actually voting in that type of environment. Not to say it's not possible, I know Bo last year did their town meeting via phone and drive by. So like people drove up in cars, um, but it's certainly not ideal. Legal counsel suggested we try to do it in person and then, um, but also try to keep it brief. So probably a, um, abridged. Presentation, make sure that we get the presentation, a full presentation, a full budget out there to the public. But act, the actual presentation in person be the light. So I just wanted to, I know we're early, but I just wanted to throw it out there that this is something that we're gonna need to, um, be aware of. Um, as we get closer.
Well, Matt, the, um, uh, select board has reached out to me wanting to know what we're doing, because they're also looking for a location. I told them we hadn't discussed it yet, but, um, I can now tell them we have, but we don't have an answer, really.
I've, um, so, so the town administrator reached out to me and I did offer them the cafeteria. Or the winter kind of auditorium as well, so that they, um, the select board needs to make that decision, but those are, that's essentially their option as well. And I, I guess they could do it at their town hall as well, so.
Oh, it, it never fit there. Um, what about, what about our budget hearing?
So the public hearing, um, there might be so similar situation. With, with the exception of legal still wants to look into it, but there, there's, there may be more flexibility in doing that remote.
Okay.
Because it's just public comment, it's, there's no voting. So there's, it's, it's a little less complicated, um, as far as a, a remote option, but that, that, that is still an option. But a potential option remotely, so.
Okay. I'm fine. And we probably need to make this decision at the January meeting. Or February at the latest? No, January.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll hope to have more information leading up to, um, January, I mean, January is when the public hearing is.
Correct.
So, um, we'll, we'll likely have it a more definitive answer on the public hearing in December, so.
Okay.
And I understand it is December, but later in the month.
Any questions for Matt? Okay, I think this wraps it up, right, Matt?
It does.
Do we, uh, need to go? Go ahead, Joe.
Well, not, not a question for Matt, but I just wanted to mention that I was going to go ahead and print the newsletter, unless anybody had any further feedback.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you.
So Matt, I'll be in touch with you about logistics.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Matt, do we have any non-public?
We do not.
Okay, uh. That being said, uh, if there's no further discussion, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Deb?
Yep, give me one second.
I, I just noticed we have a hand raised, I'm not sure if.
That's been raised, I think, the whole time.
Oh.
Um, Greg Parrish?
Uh, yes.
Jason Ferius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
John Bailey?
Yes.
And Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Deb, one quick question, um, we did not actually vote for it through board docs, are you going to go back in and put that in?
I've been doing it.
Okay, okay.
And I created the motion, but I have to go back and listen to all the language to like, update.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, everybody.